Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. Appreciate everyone's patience while I try to get organized up here. But tonight's meeting, we're going to have it being video recorded and broadcast live on the town of Penn Field's website, which is www.pennfield.org. Also, on the town of Penn Field's government access site, that's one of the guys talking to us, access channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Penn Field TV in your device's app store and get the app for free. If anyone would like to address the board tonight on any of the new items in the public hearings, you're going to be given an opportunity to do so, whether you're present or whether you decide to call in on the phone or submit a comment via that website that I just mentioned. We'll be checking periodically to see if anybody called or see if anybody submitted an electronic comment. But if you're here and you come up, we'll ask you to come up and give us your name and address for the record and then talk, say what you want to say about the application. We won't ask for that until the board's done with its questioning of the applicant. But everyone will be given a chance to speak about any application that they care to that's on the agenda for the first time tonight. We'd like to point out that the town does a pretty good job of making sure people are aware of what the agenda's going to be, what items are going to be on there, and the town does that so people can come in and speak their minds. Well, how does the town do that? Several ways. One way is to publish the agenda on the website, posted here on their bulletin board. The town sends postcards to neighbors that live within a certain number of feet of the subject property. And then the town also makes applicants post those signs in front of the property. I think we've all probably seen them. So if you're driving by and say, hey, what's going on there? You can be alerted to call the town and figure out what's going on and come in and speak, or call, or send an email if you like. We think it's a process that works pretty well. We're happy with it. So the first part of the meeting tonight's just going to be a work session. We'll review the minutes from the last meeting. We'll take care of any tabled items. We won't take a recess, I don't think, unless somebody needs one. And then we'll launch right into the new applications and have the public hearing. Just like with anyone that wants to comment, we'll ask the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us a name and address. And then typically what we do is the board members will walk the applicant through the application. Certainly, the applicant's going to be able to speak and add any info that they'd like, but everyone submitted a pretty thorough written application. We've all reviewed them. We just find it's easier and more efficient if we walk the applicant through the process. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay. So let's go to the agenda. And as I said, the first item on the agenda, second, I guess, is the approval of the minutes from last meeting.
Make a motion to approve as written?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Andres and a second, I think by Matt, was it?
Yep.
Approve as written. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we'll go to the tabled application. The first one is the Flower City Arcade. And I understand that the planning board tabled it again, but I don't want to... Why don't you come on up? I just want to say I had, I don't know what day it was, sometime this week, I think. I had a nice visit. Was it this week?
Last Thursday.
Wow. My god. It's been a long week, I guess. But I had a nice visit on the site, and we had a good conversation. Just so everyone knows, the issue pending before us is a pretty narrow one, and this young gentleman has put together an arcade down on Panorama Plaza, you know, a little bit past Delta Sonic and maybe in between the plaza there and Delta Sonic. But he wants to expand, and he has expanded a little bit. But it's probably been on four or five times, maybe more, before us because we are trying to ascertain how many parking spots he needs by code and whether he needs a variance to have actually fewer spots than required. At the same time, he's appearing before us, not at the same time, but he also has the application pending before the planning board. And the planning board is, has need of more details, and so it's been going slow. But I just wanted to let folks know, we talked about that. He invited me down there, and it's a heck of a place. You've done a really good job putting the games in there and making a go of it. So I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, my guess is we probably still don't have the information we need about the parking, but why don't you tell me what happened at planning board?
They said basically all or nothing. They want to see the variance before they make a decision.
Okay.
So I feel like I'm kind of being volleyed with that one.
All right. Was anybody on staff at that meeting? Not that I'm doubting you, but, okay.
I feel like the information we had was a little bit different. It said they needed more information from you to ascertain the exact number of parking spots, but they wanted engineer drawings now, or from an engineering firm because the scope of it's gotten larger than what it was prior from just a surveyor to be able to provide that. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, but they didn't mention that the actual parking layout was a problem with that.
Because I know that's, like, the one note that I think we last saw was that they, we needed to know how many spots that we're actually trying to approve, and they can't ascertain that until they have a plan that says, this is the site plan, this is what it's all going to look like, and it has to come from the actual engineer. That's, at least that's what I gathered from the last time I saw it.
Yeah. And I think it's a little bit, they're waiting for information that goes beyond the parking spot issue.
Right.
I believe. So let me ask you this. Is, and I know that, by the way, that's a lot of effort and it's a lot of money. I get that. And, you know, hopefully, planning board members get that as well. But is there a way that you're aware of to, you know, separately put together a parking plan, separate and apart from all the other details the planning board needs to make its mind up?
So we did submit a new site plan to them that had the parking layout we wanted, along with the leased parking spaces from next door.
Right.
And I didn't really get much feedback from that.
Was that drawn by an engineer?
It was O'Neill-Rodak. They created that.
Okay. So do we know whether that plan was acceptable?
My understanding is the planning board's still waiting for a plan, a different plan.
Well, he's given a plan. They're waiting for a plan, you know, with engineering stamps on it. I mean, an en...
I think the position is that the plan that they have provided up to now lacks the information, the detail that's necessary for them.
Okay. So here's my question to you, and I guess back to planning board, or to anybody. Can this board handle the parking question separate and apart from all the plans that the planning board needs? If the answer's no, okay. By the way, I don't, we have five members on this board, but I think, for the most part, if you take a straw vote, people feel in favor of this. But our hands are tied to a certain degree because we don't, we don't have anything in front of us that tells us how many spots you are going to need by code. You've given stuff, and you showed me the other day, how many spots you have. You went to your neighbor, did a good job of getting a parking agreement there, leasing spaces from the plaza. You got some spaces that you can see on the TV there. But let's say those spaces are 100, but the code says you need 150. Picking numbers out of the air. Then you need us to grant you a 50-spot variance. Again, our problem is we don't know what the number you need by code is. So you may have a plan that shows 70 spots.
We submitted a plan. We did submit a plan. I think we had it down to about essentially 50 spots or so, 50-something spots that we would need. I think we got to that number. And we have approached that, we've come close to that with what we have in terms of the lease, in combination with the lease and what we have on premises. So we're at, like, the 50 mark or 50...
54.
54.
54 that you have, or 54 that...
In conjunction with the lease that we worked out with our neighbor.
Sure. Okay. So you've gathered up 54 spots that you're going to be able to use.
Yeah.
What do you have that shows how many you, by code, need?
So that number's kind of been changing since the beginning. Every time I discuss that, the number of parking spaces that I need is different. I did have my company's attorney check out the town code and see how it read to him because O'Neill-Rodak, on the latest site plan, included that the, being in a business district requires me to have five parking spots for each 1,000 square feet of gross building floor area. And I'm in the Panorama Valley Business District. Between the two buildings, there's 3,807 square feet, divided by 1,000, round up, that's 20 parking spots that would be required by code.
If that standard were applied?
Correct.
The one that you just said. So you wouldn't need a variance because you got 54, and you're telling me that application, assuming you did your math and everything right, application of that standard, you'd be, you'd be, you know, way over.
Correct.
If you only need 20 and you got 54.
And after operating for the past two years, I've been operating with 10 or so parking spots, and that hasn't been an issue. And that's with, my guess, having access to 1,000 square feet. After the additions put up, the whole building would have, my building, not including the front structure, would have 2,300 square feet, so about the size of a home. But by code, between the two buildings, it's, all of the square footage between the buildings on the, on the entire property would be 20 parking spots.
Okay. So I honestly, we've probably had the same conversation every meeting for the past five or six months. Maybe, maybe something that we could address in the next month is going to be whether that particular section of the code is applicable. I don't, I know you've reviewed it, and you believe the answer is no. I think that's, I don't want to speak for you, but, I mean, we're certainly always willing to listen, and if there's a reasonable review and a change in application of codes, fine. I'm not suggesting that we do that because I haven't read the code thoroughly like this young man has or the attorney for the surveyor. But I'm sort of, as people can probably sense, a little bit frustrated, as I'm sure as he is, as is everybody on this. But, you know, you, I asked you what happened to the planning board, and you said all or nothing. I'm not exactly sure what that means.
They won't approve one aspect of the plan. They want to approve the entire plan or none of the plan?
The full site plan, right.
Right. And that's pretty standard, the planning board. They need to approve the entire site plan. And there's always the possibility that, in going through that process, there are other elements of the plan that could impact the parking and create a change in the parking or the number of parking.
Yeah. I guess I get that. So basically, what you're saying is...
We have to wait for planning.
We have to wait. We have to wait for a final site plan because that will determine what's happening on the property, once everybody stamps it and signs off on it, and that will show how many spots he has and will allow the, you, I guess, to dictate how many spots the code says he needs, based on that site plan.
And the board needs to know that because if the board grants a variance, they need to know how much of a variance, how many parking spaces the variance is for.
Sure. Yep. Yep. Okay. And what's holding you back presently from giving the planning board the type or the kind of plan that it needs?
We didn't find out we needed a civil engineer to do a different type of a plan until about a month ago. So we went, I don't know how many meetings without knowing that, but felt like I was being fed information little by little as to what I needed.
Yeah.
Instead of being told at the beginning, here's everything. This is what you need. I definitely don't feel like that happened.
Is that clear to you now, though?
Yeah.
Okay. So are you, is your plan to make an attempt to get a civil and engineer? And I know that that's easier said than done, and it's not cheap. But is that your plan now, to get an engineer to draw up a site plan that will lay out the parking and everything else?
I'd like to do that. It's all a matter of what it's going to cost me and how soon I could do that.
I understand. Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments here?
No.
It's all moves that we table it.
Yeah.
Pending the planning boards, giving us a site plan, in a sense, to say, this is how many spots, that's really what we need.
Right.
Second.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion to table and a second, and I'll, you're welcome to come back and give us updates, but don't feel that you have to. In other words, if we come next month and you're still, your engineer's not complete with the plan or something, I don't want to cut you off, but it's, it's a little bit, it's frustrating for everybody. So, all right. We have a motion to table and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
The next application is also tabled. That is, let's see, that's from a couple meetings ago, so let me pull that up.
To Penn Field Road.
Just that Andy and Christine messed with me a little bit because all of the materials on this were under the August meeting and not this meeting. No. Yeah. Just so you know, took me a while to figure that out. Okay. So what we have here is another application that's pending before the planning board.
Was.
And, yeah, was, and us. But the planning board's finished. That's great. They must have had an engineer plan some minute ago. So what we have before us tonight is, again, something I would characterize as a pretty clear, relatively simple, issue-wise, variance request. We have the applicant requesting an area variance to allow an eight-foot fence where the code says it can only be six. Why do they want an eight-foot fence? Because the operation is going to be a dog hotel and dog daycare, right? So you, and the planning board approved it with all the details and all this room and that room and this material and that material. You are asking for an eight-foot fence because you believe the two extra feet will shield neighboring properties from noise. I mean, is that...
Come up.
Come on up. Yeah.
Thank you.
We did, after we had the initial hearing, we asked you to present material, additional material to us, and as did the planning board. I think one of the biggest things that we, this board, was interested in was hearing, would the two extra feet really make any kind of difference? And you have submitted something that has a lot of numbers in it.
Yeah.
And a lot of acronyms in it.
We can boil it down pretty quickly.
Yeah. Well, this, just give me a minute here, Jerry. Whatever, this page is not numbered, but it's got a Spencer Kelly at the bottom of it.
Yes.
And I highlighted, oh, there you go. Great.
Yeah. I thought that was pretty good.
Yeah. I mean, that's, a lot of the other stuff, to tell you the truth, went...
You should have seen the way you came.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and you, there were other things. You had the videos of walking through one of your buildings, your number-one building, right?
Vanwood, New Jersey.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So what we have here is almost like an executive summary, I guess, of a study that says, okay, here are the numbers for six feet, and here are the numbers for eight feet. And again, it's language that I don't necessarily understand, but the number for eight feet seems to see, be better, if you will, in terms of sound suppression than six feet.
Correct. It reduces the decibel level to a lower level, generally five to 10 decibels. And the net result of that, going back, and, you know, there's a lot of data that goes with it, it just creates a quieter situation. We actually had two reasons and rationales why we wanted to have the eight-foot fence instead of the six-foot fence. Sound was important because that was an issue which was raised by neighbors. But in addition to that, it's a question of security relative to the dogs themselves.
Yeah, that's true.
As opposed to having some sort of screen type of thing to be able to contain the dogs if there was any reason, the eight-foot high fence is clearly the standard in terms of being able to appropriately operate the site. So those are the two rationales for it. The planning board, in addition to granting the conditional use permit, also took the liberty in something that, in my experience, they don't do very often, and that is making a recommendation to this board.
Well, they do that all the time, just not necessarily formally.
Yeah. I know. But I actually asked them if they would put it in a, put it in a letter. Obviously, you know, the fact that they had approved it would indicate that they liked what the plan was here. But in addition to that, they did actually write, and there was a separate document. I believe it was shared with you guys, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Where they're recommending them.
It was part of our package in resubmission. So there are basically two rationales why we think the eight-foot high fence benefits both the neighbors and the operation, and given its location in the rear yard, screened from, by trees and the like, we don't really see an impact, if you will, on anyone else relative to that.
So just looking at the standards here for the area variance, either one of you, are you aware of any fence or enclosure even, you know, let's say a dumpster enclosure, somebody was mentioning that to me today, that comes close to that height in that general vicinity?
Not specifically with regard to it in the immediate vicinity, but no one's really asking for fences in this type of location with this type of rationale.
So you wouldn't expect it, is what you're saying?
No. You wouldn't expect to see that.
So I'll tell you what I personally am struggling with on this application is the fact that it's, again, simple, easy. The objective evidence shows that eight feet is better than six feet. It's clearly harder, well, clearly likely harder for a dog to get over an eight-foot fence than a six-foot fence. Kind of duh. We all know that. But I, I'm not on the planning board. I wasn't on the planning board. What I'm struggling with is, I don't know if it's right for that location. However, spent a lot of time looking at what our role is, what our issue is, is not whether that's a, strictly speaking, whether that's an appropriate site for this use, but rather whether we should grant a two-foot variance. And we have the standards here to go through, and planning board's already approved it. So I think it really boils down to a very simple question for me, anyway, and that is, is an eight-foot fence going to be better for everybody than a six-foot fence? And I don't want to take all the time here, but really, for that reason, and I'll go through these items, I am going to make a motion to approve the request. Even though, like I say, I'm not on the planning board, but it would have been nice to move it a mile down the road, but it is what it is. I think, by the way, everything you submitted in terms of videos, wonderful operation. I think it'll be a big success. I just think it'd be better a mile down the road. That's, issue's not before us, I guess, is what I'm saying. So...
I'll second that motion if that was one.
Yeah.
I just have a question.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think about how to ask this. This is more for you. What happens if in two years they move out of that location? They find a better spot down the road, a mile down the road, they move out, and we've granted this variance for a very specific need? Because I think that the need that you outlined is very unique to that, this business. Would the fence need to come down?
Let's say a pizzeria moves in there, right? Is that what you're saying? Well, you know, that gets to the idea of that the variance request, once granted, the variance runs with the land. I've always taken the position, but you're a lot smarter than me, Jerry, that running with the land, the variance was granted based upon a certain number of facts and conditions. If they have changed enough, then, you know, a pizzeria doesn't need an eight-foot fence like a dog hotel. So I would, I would be comfortable saying, take the fence down, or have the pizzeria come in and ask for a variance as well, but whatever.
But like, can we put that as part of? Or...
Well, it would be the next owner.
I think the criteria is going to cover that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I may be able to set your mind at ease on that. It's, we're not going to go anywhere. It's a 10-year lease, and it's about a $2.7 million build. So for, it's a 10-year lease with five-year extensions after that, and there's no way that we could feasibly build something of that magnitude and then just up and move and build it again. So we're going to be there for a while.
Are you suggesting that if they move, that they take the fence down?
Yeah.
Or two feet off of it?
Take it with them.
Is that two degrees, Jess? I didn't know. You do you.
Well, I suppose we could do it if they agree to it. So let me ask, and you can consult with your client if you like, well, would you, if that were a condition of approval, would you agree to it?
Typically, a lot of zoning boards do condition approvals based upon the presentation made and the plan submitted. So if there is a change in the plan, that would, that would effectively force somebody to come back to the board to revisit that issue.
Was that a yes?
That was a yes. And what I'm saying is...
Unnecessary.
And what I'm saying is, is that you could very well incorporate it in the decision as Laura's indicated.
All right. Okay. Well, then that'll be part of, I'll thank you. We'll consider the motion amended in that regard, that that'll be a condition. But going through here again, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood? I don't think enough that it would dictate denial of the variance. That's one of the reasons I asked about other fences maybe there. But it is, by the way, a nice-looking fence to the extent, fences can be nice-looking. That's a nice, it'll be nice. Again, you submitted videos from your other locations, and everything was clean and appropriate.
I took that one one step farther, Dan, by saying, if it was a six-foot fence, I think it betters the surrounding properties or neighbors by mitigating the noise by offering two more feet. Because, you know, it's been known that it's going to reduce sound. I think that was the biggest issue that we heard, was sound. And then since it's, that would be a, you know, that wouldn't be undesirable, that would be a desirable change by mitigating more sound.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I'm looking at it as a buffer, not necessarily a fence, when I hear it. You know, it's an acoustical thing.
I also recall that if... I also recall that if we don't approve the variance, there was going to be that other contraption that they were going to add on.
I think that was a possibility.
The curved thing that just.
Yeah, comes down and, again, prevents them from jumping up as much.
Aesthetically, aesthetically, certainly not as pleasing as the wall would be.
Right. Okay, so again, the, the first, will a undesirable change be produced? While there aren't any other eight-foot fences in the area, the fence is going to be of, constructed of, of aesthetically pleasing material and alternatives that the applicant has already said they will utilize if the, the variance is denied are going to be much less aesthetically pleasing. So can the benefit be achieved by some other method feasible? I don't, I don't see any evidence in the record of that. It really seems to me to be either you live with a six-foot fence. I suppose there is the possibility of a seven-foot fence, a lesser variance, but now you're getting into the why bother area, if you ask me. So I, I would say no, the benefit can't be sought by some other feasible method. Is the, is the area variance substantial? Two feet, percentage-wise, it is substantial. And perhaps from somebody viewing it, two feet is, as opposed to six feet, is going to be substantial. So I would say yes to that factor. Is there going to be any adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood from this variance? I, I would say no, I don't see any evidence of that. And is it self-created? The answer is yes. But it's being created for a good faith reason submitted by the applicant to make the operation better for the neighboring properties, as, as well as the operator. So balancing all of these factors together, I do think that the variance request is justified, and that's my motion amended as per Laura's suggestion.
Have we done Seeker?
Chairman, did you second her amended motion?
No, I just renewed my motion to include her suggestion, but no, I don't, I don't think.
I will.
Okay.
Secret question still hasn't been answered.
Yeah, I'm just looking at to see if I have a paper in here that we signed.
I don't think we did Seeker.
Yeah, we'll handle that. Okay, so, no, I haven't signed it. So we'll pause the motion on the merits, and we'll go to the Seeker motion. And I will make a motion on Seeker to declare it a type-two action requiring no further review under the environmental statute.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're back to my motion, Christine, to make it clear. It includes the factors, as I've gone through them, I hope slowly enough for our scribe, our new scribe, but also including the provision that if they vacate the property or move, they'll remove the fence.
Or lessen the height of the fence.
Correct, remove two feet of it. Or take the whole thing down. So who seconded that? Andre seconded that, all right. Any further discussion? All right.
Laura had a point. You said somebody that wanted to speak? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I don't see anybody on the call, but at this point, it's a table matter. The, the, the hearing was closed to comment in any event. All right, so any, any further discussion? Ohm. We talked today, and I, and I told you that, and a number of people told you there wouldn't be any public, come on up. I'm not going to do it, but we know your point, I think I made your point a lot for you, but I'm going to give you a little bit of latitude. You don't want it there. Your business is right next door, you got a bunch of people that work for your 100 people, you've been there for a long time, that's all true, and you know I respect you and I respect your business, but a lot of your issues are planning board issues, not zoning board issues. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I do appreciate, I just wanted to say a few words. I think I have gone on record, just for record purposes. My name is Om Poply. I live on Stone Road, Pittsburgh. I have a business next to this property. And I have expressed my concern very openly and loudly. And when I came to know that the planning board has already approved it conditionally, honestly, I was disturbed. I was very, but again, I thought I'd make a pitch. I'm not against the business, but business being at another right place. You made a statement, are there any fences in the neighborhood? There are no fences, it's all open area. I'm not really sure why we are putting a fence in an open area. That's number one. Number two is, I see some putting a higher fence. Number one is a barricade. I heard the statement, it's going to reduce the noise level by some decibel points. I'm aware of the decibel points, but one thing I would suggest, the noise barriers which go along highways, 390, 490, and ask the owners who are next door to that fence, have the fence made any difference? You'll be surprised, no. The only difference is it made it because their ears got used to that noise. Okay, that's the human nature. I want to give you a simple incident, now we're talking about 90 dogs. Give you a simple instance, this morning, I was going for a walk from my home. I have a neighbor who has a dog about a couple hundred feet from my house. The moment I got out, it's just a small puppy, less than 10 pounds, and I could hear his noise or her noise standing 200 feet away. Just imagine yourself having 90 dogs, and this is something that happens. When one dog starts barking, all others start barking. It's not that one keeps quiet, the other keeps quiet. So we are talking 90 dogs barking together. I don't know how much noise it'll break. Okay, so I'm concerned about that part. At the planning board meeting, I provided the planning board some information from Google about the health effect of this noise. And it's very clear, I'm not really sure anybody addressed it or not, I have no idea. I didn't hear any back. There should have been some study, some kind of recognition thing, hey, this is what the facts are. I am less than 100 feet away from the property. My parking lot is less than maybe 30, 40 feet away. And I do have an access from my parking lot to the plaza when this whole thing was approved. I'm not really sure what thoughts went through planning board members. And I also made a statement in my, my letters to the planning board, copy to zoning board, if any of you guys would like to live next to this facility. Okay? I'm making that point again because I'm concerned about my business, about the effect on my people. Okay? And I have been there almost 30 years. In fact, one of the planning board members came to our office, I was not there, but he came. And his comment was, I didn't know you guys exist here. Such a quiet business. We are a business, we don't need any flashing light signs, anything. We don't need visibility because our clientele is different. You do your job, your work will come. And I'm concerned about my business, effect on the business, and I'm concerned about the effect on the people's thing, whether I will be able to attract the right people. We are having difficulty in this environment. Otherwise, I'm going to make it more difficult to attract right people for the business. And I'm not really threatening anything, but being realistic, if, after some time, we feel it's not working out, I say, hey, Tony Penfield, thanks, appreciate it. Had a good time for 30 years, now you contain 100 professional people with 100 dogs. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Om. Thank you. You said it better than I did, your concerns. Okay, so I think we're at the point now where we do have a motion to approve that's unchanged, and we have a second, which I'm going to assume is unchanged. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. And let's go then, I said that we wouldn't have a break, but I want to offer anybody. Anybody need a break? No, okay, let's go right into the public hearings then. Application number one, please.
Anthony and Cara L. Scroy, 27 Mount Eagle Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a storage shed with less side setback than required by section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 27 Mount Eagle Drive. The properties currently are formerly owned by Anthony T. and Cara L. Scroy, and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.01-2-314. This is application number 23Z-0057.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you see your, and your name and your address, please?
Anthony Scroy, 27 Mount Eagle Drive, Penfield, New York.
All right, so you want to put 192 square foot shed in, and you're looking for a six-foot variance, so it would be four feet from your east property line, correct?
I think I requested a two-foot side setback in the paperwork.
I think we determined it was going to be four feet.
We discussed, yeah, we discussed that, but when I actually filled out the paperwork, I did, if you went through the paperwork in detail, it did spell out a two-foot, and the letter from the neighbor also gave consent to a two-foot.
I saw the letter from the, from the neighbor, I thought it was a typo.
Well, two is better than four.
Yeah.
No.
I mean.
Two is closer.
In reference to Andy's comment, when he came out to the house.
Oh, oh, oh.
We, we did discuss a four-foot setback, and then I mapped it out again, talked to my wife. She said I would prefer a two-foot setback. So when we fill out the application, we filled it out with a two-foot request.
I see that. So what's the, what's the other, the extra two feet going to get you?
Well, what I'm trying to move away from, or try to set it as far to the right back of the property, is there's a French drain that is for, you know. So we have a French drain, and then we have mature trees. So I'm trying to have the shed be as far from those two pieces so I don't have to remove one of the large trees.
Okay.
And I'm also, the property slopes, there's a slight grade because there's an easement with a drain, so I'm just trying to get to the highest ground possible in my narrow backyard.
So if it's a, if we granted, let's say, a four-foot variance, or a six-foot variance, so it's four feet from, from the setback rather than the two feet that you're requesting, is that, obviously, it's probably going to be closer to trees and closer to the French drains, but is it, you're, are you going to have to take trees down or move the drains?
I don't believe I'll have to take a tree down with a four-foot setback.
Okay.
With that said, we would prefer a two, which is our preference.
Sure, so, so let's, let's, let's table whether it's noted as a two or a four-foot variant, or setback. One of our jobs is to grant you the most minimum variance that we need to grant you.
Okay.
So, so if you were to do it as a four-foot setback, would you still put the shed in?
Yes.
Okay. Would there be a significant expense undertaken by doing it four feet from the property line instead of two feet from the property line?
No, because I have not installed the shed yet.
So then the, as far as aesthetically, minus taking out a ruler and measuring an extra 24 inches, is it aesthetically going to make a big difference to have it four feet from the property lines instead of two feet from the property line?
No, I don't think so, not materially.
Okay. So I guess my question is, why that the four feet, or why the two feet instead of the four feet?
It's a small with, I guess with the pool deck that we have and the trees, it's a really small backyard.
Okay.
So I was trying to get it, I can't go, I can't get. Yeah, I'm trying to have as much useful space in the backyard. There is an easement with a drain, so I have to adhere, obviously, to the 10-foot setback in the back. So the only place that I can create more usable space is putting it as far east, I guess, as possible.
Is there going to be electricity to the shed?
No.
Lighting?
No. No utilities at all.
Pool stuff, things like that, that's what.
Pardon?
Utilize for pool stuff and outdoor.
We're going to, yeah, so we're putting all of our patio furniture in it, bikes, shovels, pool equipment. Everything that you would typically put in a garage, we want to put into the, into the shed.
Aesthetically, it looks adorable.
Yeah, it's a very nice-looking shed. It's a very nice-looking shed, and clearly, the neighbors don't, don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, we actually, this is an illustration, we actually added windows in the back of it so our shit, so our neighbors behind us could actually not have to look at 16 feet of siding.
So I have a question if I, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm, I'm just in my head debating one.
Yeah, can, can we go back to the other screen on the television there? Yeah, that, that. Blow that up just a little bit, no.
Which one?
Make that larger. There you go. Okay, what I'm trying to see is what that extra, what the extra two feet get you, other than the obvious.
Doesn't sound like anything.
Well, it gets them more yard to use.
Yeah, and this.
I get that, but is there, is there more passage? Is it, are things easier to?
There's more home now, first off. So the garage goes back beyond the family room, which was just recently completed. So this, this image is a little dated.
There's an addition on the back.
So, yeah, on the back, we took the garage back and over a little bit to accommodate, aesthetically, a nice roof line for our neighbors, put a bunch of windows, brick the side. So when you look at the backyard, you can see there's a ton of trees. We tried to preserve as many trees as possible when we did the pool project, and we really don't have a lot of yard. So, yeah, it, it, does two feet matter? I don't know. It mattered to my wife, which is why she.
I understand.
Requested it.
Well, another way to look at it is to say, is just, just the opposite. Giving you two feet more, is there any more harm than giving you any variance to begin with? And, you know, I don't, I don't know if you see that or not, but I do, I understand. The rule is, we're supposed to grant the minimum variance that allows you to accomplish your purpose, which your purpose is to put up a shed closer than allowed.
If you didn't have the easement in the back for the storm, or, or the drainage, would you have tried to go backwards towards the back of the lot rather than going sideways?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Andy came to the house, and soon as we saw the drain, we knew we couldn't go back, which is why.
And if you could have gone back, you probably wouldn't be going as close to the side.
I have no option to go back, so.
You know, Andy, if I can, the, the difference between the four and the two, is there any difference from, that you think from a town staff standpoint about that? Because I know there were, there's a lot of easements, there's a lot of drainage, all that stuff here, and it's, and he's made it clear why he would like it, that makes perfect sense.
It's not going to have any impact on drainage or the easement or anything.
Okay. Whether it's two or four, all right. Any other questions? I, I don't want to.
I, I don't have any.
Any other questions from the board?
No, sir.
I kind of forgot about the fact that people can call in because I've been talking so much tonight. I don't see any phone calls. Oh, well, no. That's old, that one there, Webster Montessori School, that's not us. Okay, so anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? No. All right, then let's move to its consideration.
All right, for Seeker, I would make a motion to declare this a type-two action requiring no further review.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to declare it a type-two action by Matt, and a second by George. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So for the merits, I'll make a motion to approve the two-foot setback, so the eight-foot variance. It's a beautiful shed, it's aesthetically pleasing, it's certainly, there's some support of the neighbors, so it's not going to produce any detriment to the neighborhood or the surrounding properties. It really, well, besides moving it to four feet instead of two feet, it couldn't have been achieved by a more feasible way. There's easements, there's trees, certainly, an expense with taking down the trees, and the trees probably should, they should not be disrupted if they don't need to. By the way, I have this written down for you, too. It is substantial, but there's no way to look at it any other way, other than being substantial, but I think there are other factors outweigh that. There won't be, because they're not taking down trees, there's not going to be a detrimental effect to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and it's also, again, supported by the neighbor and aesthetically pleasing. And it is self-created, but again, that's another factor that I'm putting less, little weight into. So for those reasons, I would move to approve this.
I'll second. All right, motion to approve by Matt, second by Andres. Any further discussion? Need to repeat any of the factors?
I've got it written down.
Okay. You're going to get writer's cram before the night's out. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, good luck.
Thank you.
And tell your wife, good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Can we get this man a fillable PDF or something, so he can?
Computer's frozen.
Oh, jeez.
Have to write everything. I don't know why.
All right, second application tonight.
Anthony and Cara Galante, 1437 Plank Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.1-E1K of the code to allow a mini-pig rescue and area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than the residence as required under section 250-2.2 of the code, larger than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, and taller than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12C of the code at 1437 Plank Road. The property is currently formally owned by Anthony J. and Cara Galante and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 095.04-1-23.2. This is application number 23Z-0058.
George, before you begin, if you don't mind, I just, there's been some questions raised about the applicable code here, and I just want to make sure that everybody on the board is aware of that and the opinions that have been expressed on that. One of the issues is, do we have a situation here where we're having a business run on a residential property in a manner that violates, would violate the code without permission from the appropriate authority? It's a home, obviously, the property has a home, and then you, there's going to be a business run on, a not-for-profit business, but a business. So just want you to, and I know you sent an email earlier, I don't know if everybody saw it.
So, yeah, generally, generally, the code does not allow commercial businesses to operate on single-family residential properties. However, there are conditionally permitted uses that are allowed under the code that are actually business uses. So if, if the board determines that this is, in fact, a conditional use, the fact that it is a business is, in my opinion, not really relevant.
And I actually did call the town of Penfield before I applied for my 501(c)(3), and they told me that it was fine. Because I wouldn't have paid, you know, a few thousand dollars for a 501(c)(3).
And I'm not saying, I want you to understand, I'm not saying it's not fine. What I'm saying is, we have to make sure we're applying the correct standards when we make our decision. So I want to make sure that I understand what you just said. You first said that there's, you can't run a business from a residential property.
Generally, it's not permitted, correct.
But if, can you run a business from a residential property that has a home that people are living in, if it's conditionally approved?
Yes, and there is another provision of the code that does allow for home businesses.
Right.
Customary home occupations, and that there are certain requirements that need to be met, such as no outside employees, things like that. And then, you know, like I said, the other situation is, if it is a conditionally permitted use, and it is a business, that would be something that would be allowable.
Okay, and I guess, taking what you just said a step further, is items that this board can consider then, when deciding whether to grant a conditional use permit, is how many employees there are going to be, that sort of thing.
Right, the conditional use review is going to allow the board to verify that there aren't going to be any significant impacts to neighboring properties.
By the use.
By the use.
Right.
One of those factors would be the amount of employees, traffic, that sort of thing.
Lighting, parking, ingress, egress, all the standard ones, okay. Well, thank you for that.
So I still have, not that I don't love Andy and respect what he said, but reading the code under conditional uses, it lists A through J as conditional uses. And then K, which is what I believe this is falling under, says, paraphrasing, or any other conditional use, which is, any other use which is similar in nature. But then it goes on, and it says, provided, however, that in any event, no conditional use permit shall or may be issued with respect to any explicitly prohibited use. And that, and one of the explicitly prohibited uses would be a customary home occupation that involves business taken, conducted in a garage or accessory structure. So if we were to prove this conditional use permit, then we would be permitting them to operate in a manner that is prohibited expressly.
Which, you're saying we don't have the authority to do?
Correct.
Okay. All right, this is all completely new to you folks, obviously?
So let me ask you this, then. So if we forget our corporation that we have, we put in for non-for-profit, if we just apply as Anthony and Cara, what's?
But the application before us is telling that we have, you have a trade mind.
I get that, but I can also amend the application too, correct?
Sure, but it's still a business, to answer your question. Whether it's a 501(c)(3) or an LLC or anything like that, it's a business.
No, I'm saying, take the business out of the equation.
No, but what I'm, and what I'm saying is, we're defining business differently. I'm not talking about a formal entity. You're going to be running an operation out of your house.
If it's a DBA, which essentially what you're describing, it's a DBA.
Okay, well, we certainly, so, oh my God, this may be all news to you too, but I do think we need to make sure we're doing things right, and we have the right standards before us, before we, you know, make a decision, one way or another. So I think ultimately, we're likely to table this to make sure that our board attorneys had a chance to review it and guide us. And it may be that ultimately, he says, the way they apply it is, you know, the way that Andy reviewed it, the way they applied is, a-okay, go ahead and make your decision, because we're going to hear your application tonight, for sure, about why you need the building, the size that you do, and all that stuff. And what we'll do is, we'll make sure that you know what the answer is, and if the answer is, what we have originally is the proper application, then you say, great, okay, what's the decision? If it's a different application, we'll leave this hearing open to give you the opportunity to address the different standards, if we indeed end up applying different standards. That make sense?
Yep.
So we're going to table it, we're not going to vote, we're going to table it to make sure, honestly, we get the standards right.
And that's just to make sure that, you know, we don't approve something, then all of a sudden, you guys go ahead and move forward, and someone goes and questions it and says, you guys did it all wrong, and now everything you've started is in jeopardy.
Right.
And so it's a little bit to protect, I guess, us, protect you guys, to make sure nothing goes forward without being correct. So that's the last thing we want to do.
No, we don't want that.
Okay, George, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no worries, actually, I has, you did what I was going to do, which I said, I wanted to split that part off first, and make sure I understood the impact and what we needed to do. So what I would like to do is, first and foremost, excellent application, all the detail was there, it made it real easy for me to read through it. You may have noticed my car slinking past your property earlier today, taking a look at the actual, because it gives me a visual, so that I can talk to you guys intelligently with the question. So I did note it's fairly rural, there are some other homes out there, but they're certainly big lots, people are well-spaced out. And the size of the home is large enough that the structure itself, I don't see, how I would even see it from the road, quite honestly.
Yeah, that was one of the things I was going to mention, that's not in our application, is the finished square feet is 3164, I believe. But if we, down the road, decide to finish our bonus room over the garage, which is another 950 square feet, we'd be well over the, you know, it's, so the actual house is much bigger than 3164.
So let's kind of walk through the specific, so we understand. You want to be able to have the height six feet higher than would be allowed by code.
It's less than six, I believe it's up to 25 feet or less than 26 feet.
I'm reading through here, you were looking for variance of?
Less than 26 feet, is, I believe, is what I put on the actual application.
Twenty foot is what you can have for an accessory.
Yeah, so the maximum is 20 foot, you're asking for a 26 foot, so that's a six-foot variance from our perspective. You're asking for a variance of six feet from the maximum of 20.
I was thinking five, but, okay. It's, my whole thing was, I think, when I put it on there, was less than 26 feet.
Okay, was, again, what I'm reading is that it was a six-foot variance, so. So anyways, then you also were asking for a 39-square-foot variance for the maximum size based on the size of the house, which you just indicated that you could increase that by adding that room in there. And then you're also requesting that the overall building size be 1,022 square feet larger than what is allowed as a maximum, which is 2178.
So that, we discussed with Andy, and he mentioned that if it's agricultural, if it's, I guess I'm-
Well, there's, there are no specific limitations on an agricultural building, but that would be a building for, used on a farm, a farm building.
Okay.
And this is not a-
Yeah, but I thought you said that if it's a farm building, or deemed agricultural, it can be the same size as the house itself.
Well, if it's an agricultural building, like I said, there is no limitation to how big it can be.
But I think he was saying it has to be like a farm, these are very bougie pigs. These are not, they're not farm pigs, like they-
You made that, I don't think-
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
They wear shirts and that kind of thing, they're definitely pets.
Yeah, so anyways, we've, those were the variances, as I understood it. So now, you did hear that my partner in crime, Matt, did indicate to you, our goal is to determine what is the minimum variance necessary in order for you to be able to meet the needs.
Right.
So I'm going to ask a couple of straight questions. First and foremost, would you be willing to lower the height by six feet? I can see that there's an item on the top of the building. Is it possible to lower the overall height to get it below or at the 20-foot mark, so that it wouldn't require a variance?
The only reason that, well, one of the reasons why I requested it to be higher is because we, our house in the back, if you look at the back of our home, it is probably 28 feet tall in the back. From the front, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that. So I, in my opinion, was that it would complement the house better than, it would, I shouldn't say that, it's not going to complement the house, it's going to, it's not going to overburden the look of it, as far as I-
Understood, but remember, my goal here is to try to minimize the variances. So if we could, if we could look at those options and say, is that something that you would consider? The other is, since 39 square feet is not-
Question, what is that little thing on the top called again?
Coppola.
Coppola, yeah.
How tall is that, and is that being counted as part of your six-foot?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted it, I want it to look really nice, like I don't want it to look farmy. I want it to look-
Bougie.
Yes, yeah, I just, I want it to complement the area, you know, it's like, the house next to us is absolutely beautiful, it's a new build, we have a heritage Christian services home. You know, if you're looking at our house to the right, we, you know, we get along really well with all the neighbors. We, you know, I want to fix up, we bought, we bought this house like five, six years ago. We have a lot to do to fix up the outside, to make it, you know, look a little bit nicer. I don't want this to look too farmy, I want the top a little bit decorative, and there's a lot that goes inside there, we have to buy a skid steer, like to keep everything clean outside, and then there's a lot of straw that you have to buy, like for the winter, and that's what's going to go upstairs, like to keep it clean and dry. For the airflow, Ly Pot Farm told me you really want to keep that upstairs, so that everything downstairs, so it's off the ground. So that was our logic for having the second level upstairs. So I mean, I guess if we had to, we would-
But I'm saying, how tall is that coppola, it's got to be about six feet.
I, no, I think it's more like two to three feet.
Really? It looks so tall here.
And again, we, we're looking to do the footprint, the final, as far as what it's going to look like, as far as, you know, what our architect comes up with, you know, for the final look of it, and that's one of the things that obviously can be removed or-
That looks really good.
Or there, it does look good.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody would oppose the fact that the decorative items may or may not make the building look nicer. What I'm looking for is ways we can reduce the overhaul height to get it down to the 20-foot.
Right, and that's more like, you know, could your haloff storage not be 10-foot, could it be, you know, eight-foot or seven-foot to get through, or those kind of, you know, can things be scaled down? Because anytime we can say, you know, this is a big structure, anytime we can try to minimize the variances, makes a big difference.
Correct.
So just, let's ask it open, and have you answer it. What ways are there that you can reduce the height of the building to bring it in code compliance? If any, feasible ways?
I mean, obviously, removing the coppolas.
That's one, but she likes it, it looks nice, okay, so what's two?
I guess, I mean, there's some wiggle room in there. Obviously, when you have a loft on a second floor, you know, 20 feet is just, it just doesn't seem, like I feel like we need a little bit of a buffer there for that second, that second tiered area. I mean, I don't know, I think-
I mean, it's really, we, this is what we want, do we, you know what I'm saying? It's like, this is what we, we came up with what we really, really want. I sat with Ly Pot Farm, and the vet, and everybody, and this is what is ideal for us.
So it's been like, it's been vetted by people that know what they're doing, in a sense, you're saying, too.
Right, right, so do we need it? Absolutely not, but this was like, perfect scenario. If we could do it, this is why we came to and said, this is what we really, really want. And if you say, you can't have it, we can't have it.
Well, what we are charged with saying is, you may have it, or you can have it, if you give us sufficient reasons. And honestly, just like the gentleman right before you, hey, I'd rather have eight feet rather than two feet. Everybody wants a yard.
Right.
But the code is the code. So I guess I, and I'm sorry, George, I'm-
Yeah, no worries, it's always a group effort, David.
Yeah, so what about your use? Let me ask it this way, what about your intended use requires, requires that building to be 26 feet high, or 25, whatever it is?
Really, I guess, just the amount of straw and hay and airflow. You know, like when the, when we were coming up with how much we would need for the winter, they came up with, I didn't really do it, but we, they, we came up with how much straw and hay that we would want for the winter, came up with how we would stack it, how much airflow you would need, how high it would be, and that's what they came up with.
So let me ask, because it's going, you're going to come back next month.
Okay.
So ask your architect, engineer, whatever it is, that question.
Okay.
What can be done, if any, the answer may be nothing. But given the desired use, what can- use, what can be done from a, uh, you know, an architectural standpoint to reduce that variance? And if you come back and say, you know what, we liked, we liked the, the little thing on top, uh, we wanna keep that, but we can reduce it by two feet, then, you know, you guys have made an effort to reduce the variance requested. We've asked and, and you've done that.
Sure.
Um, and honestly, again, I'm sorry, but, you know, the other one, the thirty-nine feet.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna really make a point of that. I think that, I think that's...
It's so small that maybe it's not a big deal to us, but at the same time...
Thirty-nine feet.
Get rid of a variance request if you can.
Yeah, if you pull thirty-nine square feet off of that, that's a huge difference in terms, that's one less variance altogether, this point seen.
So, so you're saying, like, instead of a forty by eighty, make it a forty by seventy-eight?
It, it could be, it's probably even less than that.
That goes to the other one, too.
And that's one less variance you need.
And then, and then we wipe the whole entire variance off of this property, and all of a sudden, now you're already more in compliance with your plans coming in.
Yeah, I, I, again, that's why we haven't finalized anything as far as the architecture and things like that. We wanted to s- see what we could get. Um, I, I mean, obviously two, you know, two square feet, or, I'm sorry, uh, taking two feet off the, the length of the building, that's not, probably wouldn't have much effect, obviously, for what we're just...
So, it's another thing for you to think about.
Yeah, so, so they actually, you're, the, the whole team here is getting through the whole list here. I don't have a whole lot, I'll have to say. Um, the, the, the last one is obviously the largest, at a thousand twenty-two, um, for the, the max that's allowed, which is twenty-one seventy-eight. And that's, that's got nothing to do with the size of the house, it's got to do with the size of the property and what's allowed by the...
Right.
So, um, interestingly enough, if you do take off that two feet, you will also reduce that one as well. So you will have effectively, hopefully, maybe eliminated two by the height and the, and the, um, and the, the, the house to, to, uh, to, um, building, um, percentage.
A lot.
Thirty-nine, yeah, allotment. And then it would just be the one that would itself be smaller. So, I think that's, that's actually a really good way to approach it, and I like that. Um, we're gonna walk through a couple of additional questions, just to kind of understand overall. So, um, I don't really, the, I don't really believe this will change the, the overall view or the character of the neighborhood. Um, but have you talked to your neighbors on either side? Are they aware of the, of what you're looking to do? And what's the feedback that you're getting from your neighbors?
So, the, the gentleman to the east, um, he just put a, a, a building up, um, over, at the end of last year, he put a building up. Um, the other property to the west, which is a group home, that whole back part of that is all raised septic bed. So nothing's, nothing can go there anyway.
And they love our...
Yeah, and, and, you know, most of the, I believe, the majority of the residents there are confined to wheelchairs. Um, so they're not really, it's not really an outdoor thing for them. I'm sorry?
No, not all of them.
No.
I want your neighbor in the back.
Gotcha, and you'll, you'll be given an opportunity to...
And then, as far as the neighbor in the back, obviously, we, uh, there's a row of pine trees there. Um, one of the things that we discussed was when they dig out the area for the, um, for the barn, you know, for the site prep and stuff like that, I was gonna have them put it towards the back of the property to create more of a berm. Um, that, that was just something we were, we planned on doing.
Gotcha, okay. Um, the same, the, 'cause the next question is obviously, I, pretty self-explanatory, or pretty answers itself, is, is there any other method that you feasibly would be able to provide this, again, without the variances, i.e. putting up a smaller building, or that would be completely in compliance?
No, we've been doing that for nine years, and we wanna have the bigger one get them, um, out of our house.
And one of the, one of the reasons for the bigger areas, because when, when we take in, if we take in a pig, even from Lollipop, or, or somebody who gets a pig, and, which happens a lot, they, they don't have, they're in a residential neighborhood with, you know, ha- half acre lot, and they're having these mini pigs, and then people come, finally, yeah, they dump, they wanna get rid of them fast. We have to quarantine them. They can't be around the other pigs when we take a new pig, and so that's the additional space.
Same if you were doing with dogs or cats, you'd have to quarantine the animal, yep. I understand. Okay, so realistically, you need the larger space to effectively be able to provide the services to the animals. Okay. So, um, what, this is, we would consider this a substantial variance, because there are three, and at least one of them is substantial. So I am, I'm gonna mark down here that we do this substantial, but you're looking to reduce two of those, okay?
So what is it, we're gonna reduce it to two feet?
The length, and then the height.
You're, you're gonna try, you're gonna go back to your professional and say, you know, we, we never, we, we almost always ask people to reduce the variance, but, uh, first of all, it's, it's the applicant's choice. You can come and ask us for permission for whatever. Uh, I don't want anyone to think anybody's twisting any arms here.
Sure.
But I think you understand what our job and our role is as well. So, um, we, we don't look for people to come back, make changes that we may have suggested, but now it's not a project that they like. And then, two years, they're regretting what they did. Now, we're not looking for that. I, I, something that, that I would ask you to do in the interim as well, is because the, the variance request for the, the thousand feet is huge. It's a really, a- and I've read your letter here, and it's a well-written letter. I understand why you would want a building that big. What I'd like to see is more why either you or the experts say you kinda need a building that big.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, as opposed to want. And if the experts say, geez, you know, you can, you can have a building that's, uh, five hundred square feet smaller, then let us know that. You know, that's the sort of give and take that we're talking about with you. It may not be the case, but again, I, it's a well-written letter, and it talks about how, how nice it would be to have this much space, you're gonna be able to do this, do that, quarantine, all that stuff. But, um, you know, what, it's just need versus want. And I'd like to see a little bit more on, you know, need.
Sure.
Okay.
Make sense? Okay, George, I'm a little, you, you keep stalling, I'll keep interrupting, so.
I, I'm going to, I'm gonna withhold my snarky response, because people are taking notes. Um, so, you know, the, the last question here, I think probably we're gonna wanna get some feedback. It appears there may be some folks in here that may wanna speak to this. Um, but, uh, the, the question is whether it would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment or conditions in the neighborhood. So, um, it doesn't appear from what you provided that it would from, from the perspective of the layout and the drawings and the rest of it. Um, but again, in that case, I'm gonna wait to put down a response on that till I hear from, from others that may wanna give their input on that particular area. So, um, I think at this point, because we got a couple of things, we want them to come back, Dan, I'd like to kinda open it up to questions to the rest of the board, and then, and then anybody in the audience that wanted to speak, yeah.
Anybody else on the board have questions?
Yeah, just, so we don't have to ask these another day, once we get the, with the actual pig rescue itself, and, how, how many pigs do you anticipate having at any given time?
Uh, Lollipop Farm told me that I could have probably up to thirty-five, but I don't want any more than like, probably eighteen to twenty, because I want them, uh, very well-trained. Because if I, if they're not, um, very well-trained, and very social, and more, um, the more they are like pets, and very well-trained, um, then they're gonna come back to me if they're not.
Yeah, so I, I guess that brings up my next question. So, so what, what, what is the, the procedure here? Th- these are not pigs that are, are, are moving in with you permanently? You're, you're...
No, definitely not.
Rehabbing them, training them, doing what they need?
Yep, yep, we're not a sanctuary, we are absolutely a rescue. So what happens is, I mean, sometimes Lollipop Farm will call me and say, hey, I have, um, three piglets that need to be bottle-fed, can you take them, um, only for two weeks? That'll happen once in a while, and then I'll have them for a couple of weeks, bring them back to Lollipop Farm. Or I have somebody that says, like Tony said, hey, I got this really cute piglet, I live in the town of Penfield or Webster, in a neighborhood, I didn't know I wasn't allowed to have them, animal control just came, and I have twenty-four, forty-eight hours to get rid of them, can you take them? Or sometimes I'll come home, and there's a crate in the middle of my driveway with a pig in it. That's happened a couple of times. Um, you know, just, so what I do is I get the pig, um, train it a little bit usually better. Um, they're kinda like dogs, you know, if you don't train them, they end up, um, you know, having bad habits, and people don't want them anymore. So I give them some manners, and I find them home, and they're usually out within one to three months.
And, and where, where does the funding from this come from?
Us.
Us.
We haven't, we haven't collected any donations yet.
Yeah, we haven't collected any donations or anything like that.
Yeah, we got our five oh one C three, but I haven't been good about doing anything about it yet.
So I'm sure it's in this letter, or other parts of your application, but, um, can you tell us a little bit about more than you already have about, about the pigs? How big are they, you know? Not to be crass, but do they smell? I mean, are we gonna have odors in your neighborhood?
Um, they, some of them come to me smelling absolutely terrible, because they're like any other animal. Um, if you don't take care of them, they smell terrible.
Yeah.
But if you bathe them, um, they, they don't have hair, I mean, they don't have fur, they have hair. Um, they're absolutely not dirty animals, they like to be clean, they go, always go to the bathroom in the exact same spot. Thus, the skid steer that he wants, um, to put in this barn, that's why it's gotta be big, we have to put a skid steer in there, because they will only go in one potty area, even in our house. Like, um, right now, we have a little piglet in our house, not even, um, three months old. She only goes in one area outside, you bring her outside, she goes in that one spot, has never gone to the bathroom in our house, ever. Um, they're, they really are super, super clean, they're intelligent. Um, they, oh, any, any US about the size. Any, anyone that says, oh, this is a teacup pig, or, you know, you've heard like, the mini micro pigs, fake, that's absolutely fake. Any pig that they say is gonna be twenty-five, thirty-five, forty pounds, I end up with those two. Because then they end up to be eighty, hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty pounds, and then people don't want those anymore, because that's not what they expected. I had one pig that somebody bought that was like, ten pounds, or something like that. Um, he ended up to be two hundred and eighty pounds, and he was in an apartment. So, he came to us, um, actually just left a few months ago, went, he went to a farm. Um, but most, most of these pigs are really well-trained, they go outside like a dog. Um, they're, you know, like I said, very clean. We had, uh, one pig, actually, he just died, he was our pet. Um, he slept in bed with my son, he would go outside, go to the bathroom like a dog, come back in, you know, you'd say, you know, time to go outside, and he'd start screaming in the winter, because he didn't wanna go outside, he didn't like the cold.
Yeah.
Fun fact, pigs are like...
So, I guess to answer your question, as far as the size goes, I mean, the average that we see, we're prob-, you know, anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty pounds. Um, they're, they're not tall, they're, they're certainly not farm pigs that are three, you know, three hundred to a thousand pounds. Um, they're, they're, you know, they're definitely not that big.
And how about noise, and again, you know, we just heard a lot about a dog.
No, they're not like that.
No, and, so, so...
I mean, they squeal, they squeal, and you come out and you give them their food, but they're, they're definitely not like dogs. Like, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be walking down the street and hear a bunch of pigs screaming from our house.
Okay, uh, and, and smell, if you let them get smelly, but you're not, you're gonna run an operation where there's no, and how about, are they, are they gonna be, um, like, are, will they ever be outside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we plan on putting a post and rail fence up, um, not sure how big yet, um, with, behind, the, they, they call it pig panels. It's a pig, pig fence, 'cause the bottom, the bottom is much thicker, because they, they tend to stick their nose and try and dig underneath the fence.
Yeah.
So, aesthetically, it would be a post and rail wood fence with a pig panel, a metal pig panel behind it, that's pretty much...
And they'll be able to come in and out, I mean, they'll go to the bathroom outside, um, and be able to go in and out as they want to.
So, I, I think I'm understanding, uh, from what you said, that you're not gonna have an issue with pigs, uh, getting out and running around.
Oh, no.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and, and what about the similar sort of thing, and, you know, God forbid, but what about predators coming in there? I mean, it...
Yeah, so...
Why we'll have the fence.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a, a pretty good-sized coyote that's been, been lurking around. Um, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, we put, we put the, the, I forgot, it's a type of urine, we put that...
Wolf urine.
Yeah, wolf urine, we've put that down before, and, you know, seen, that, you know, can, I don't think we're gonna stop at all unless we put a completely contained fence or something like that, but, yeah, it's not...
But you're, you're gonna take all reasonable efforts?
Absolutely.
You're gonna make those to ensure that none of this bad stuff happens?
Yeah, we've been there for six years, we've always had a pet pig, and none of those things have ever happened.
It, it's similar in a sense, um, to some of the, uh, horse stable applications we've had over the years, because the, the issues sort of are similar, that are you gonna keep the horses on the property, are there gonna be predators? Smell, you know, what are you gonna do with the manure? So I guess I'll ask you, it's probably not called manure, but whatever. Well, I know, if I said what I wanna say, my mother would, it would hit me. So it's pig something.
Feasies.
Pig feasies, yeah. How, how are you gonna get rid of that? And, and...
Uh, so, I mean, what we, what we've done, um, historically is, you know, we put it in a, in a pile with, with straw, mix it with straw and stuff like that, and then we end up using it in our garden.
Okay.
Just a couple of follow-up questions, then, just in a sense of good point, let's make sure we knock them out. Um, type of exterior lighting that you would have on the building? Would it be, um, visible from either, well, probably not from the road, but to other neighbors?
We weren't gonna put anything on the back. Um, we were thinking, obviously, on the, the door side, um, on the, on the east side of the building, we like to put a light there. Um, that's really all we discussed at this point.
So it would be a light at the entrance?
Correct.
And would that light be on all the time at night, or would it just be when you were going in and out?
I, I was thinking motion, some sort of motion light.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So you, obviously, you'll be running power out to the building and, and, uh, going through the regular process to get all the appropriate permits for the build?
Yeah, been trying to call Argini for about three months now.
And now, the last question, at least for me, is, because it's a rescue, and there is the, there is the, uh, could be additional traffic, I mean, is it, is it the kinda thing where you'd have a lot of people coming and going? How often?
Absolutely not. No, we have, we have six kids, and it would be no different than it is now. Nope, all the kids help us. I mean, we really wouldn't, uh, we have, now, we have people help us once in a great while, but for the most part, I mean, we do it, the kids do it. Uh, we don't really have a lot of outside help, we don't need a lot of outside help.
Okay.
All right, any more questions about the operation, uh, from the board? I don't see any electronic submissions or phone calls, so I'll ask anyone in the audience that cares to speak about this. Why don't you come on up, sit right there, and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what, uh, it's on your mind.
My name is Fred Lair, I live at fourteen forty Allen Road, directly behind these folks. And I was wondering what you're gonna do with the manure?
Well, I mean, there, there's, I don't know how graphic you, or detailed you want me to get about the, the manure. It's, it's very, it's not, it's, it's not the size of horse manure, that's, it's much smaller amounts.
Yeah.
Thirty pigs, though.
I'm sorry?
But, you know, let him finish, let him finish, I gotcha.
Um, my, my plan was to do more of a compost-type thing. Um, you know, you offer it to people for, for their use, for their gardens, things like that. Um, we'll obviously put enough straw and things to minimize the, any odors that would come from that. Um, you know, that's about all I can speak to on this point.
So, so, but you, you've, you've never done anything like that with thirty pigs, or twenty pigs, whatever the number's gonna be before?
No, I think the most we did was like...
Well, we've had twelve.
Yeah, twelve was, was like...
So, again, knowing that this is gonna be tabled, what I'd suggest that you do is maybe reach out, maybe to some horse stables. But if the, um, manure, the, the feces, whatever that, we're gonna call it, got to the point where it was...
Sure.
Uh, either for your neighbor, for you, say, okay, this is, it ain't working, it smells.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's my house, too, so I, obviously, I wouldn't wanna do that.
Then, you know, what'll happen is, you'll explore ways to get it off the property, whatever, whatever way that is. So, why don't you come back again next month and say, hey, this is our plan, mix it with straw, spread it out, but if it, if it turns out that's not working, um, then here's plan B, with regard to disposal of that.
Sure.
Yeah, it might be helpful if you could reach out to a similar organization and find out what they actually do.
Yeah.
And maybe could bring that back, that would be really helpful, yeah.
Lollipop.
No, the other one.
Okay. So, wait and see is the answer on that one. Okay. So wait and see is the answer on that one.
Yes, thank you. The other question I had is, can you show... Bring up the barn again on the print? Show me where it's gonna set in regard to your house?
Oh, yeah, the...
Bring up the site map.
The site map, yeah.
Can you blow it up?
So how many feet is that to your property line? Can you guys tell?
I would say...
It's more than 100, I believe.
Yeah, I would say about 120 feet from the property line, yeah.
And the reason we didn't push it more forward is because there's actually a natural swale that goes kinda diagonally across...
Yeah, we wish it could be more.
Yeah, we wanted to actually put it a little bit closer to the house, but that swale's kinda preventing that.
Okay, do you get a sense of where it is now from looking at that?
I do.
And...
100-plus feet?
Yes.
From the pine trees?
Correct.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
I got the coyote, by the way.
Oh, you did get it? Oh, good. Yeah, I went out looking for it.
When you put the fence up, the enclosure, where is that gonna go in regard to the barn?
It would go to the west side of the structure.
The west end?
The west side, yeah, the group home side.
Right, towards the group home.
Yep.
Did you have any other questions?
I had a question, actually, for the board. If you guys were in my place, would you think that a pig farm in your backyard would affect your property value?
It's not a pig farm, is my first response to that.
Pig rescue area.
Yeah, well, I have to tell you, the answer is maybe, but maybe it would affect it by enhancing it. Who knows? If it's a nice operation that has a great reputation of being good for the community, it may very well. Might it reduce it?
Sure.
I have to tell you, I've been on this board for 25 or more years, 25 or more, and it's gonna hurt our property values is something that we hear because it's sort of like a natural reaction to anybody. But we rarely, rarely see any objective evidence of that. Times we do is when they're putting up cell towers, you know, that sort of thing. So, might it be, but if it's a conditionally permitted use, and of course, we have that whole issue to resolve, then we have a code that says they can do it with conditions. Conditions such as limit the hours that the lights are on, get rid of the pig crap, you know, do that. No unnecessary noise. So there are some uses that the code allows that might be... Might result in reduction of values, but the code and the town has made a decision that despite that, they are permitted under proper circumstances and, and anybody moving into that area should know what the code is. Or what may be... I'll give you a perfect example. We have somebody that bought a home in our neighborhood, pretty nice neighborhood, that has sort of on a bend. And shortly after they bought the home, they put a... Andy knows exactly what I'm gonna talk about because I got a million phone calls on it. What I would call is a mini solar farm, right there. You cannot miss it. And it complied with code. It didn't need a variance, it didn't need anything, I think, other than a building permit. And so every single person that called me said it's gonna kill our property values. Well, I gotta tell you, the next week, a house directly across the street sold for X over asking value. So maybe they could've got X plus. I don't know. So I would... I'd love to be able to answer, give you a real hard answer, a hard and fast answer to that question, but I don't know that anybody can. Maybe a real estate agent that can come in and show how...
You can understand it, it does.
Pig rescues.
Absolutely, but, you know, just in response to that, you know, it is our home, too, and I'm... We're not...
Yeah, so, hey, guys, what I could also recommend is there are other organizations very similar that are doing this other places. You could probably get some information from them as far as impact to the neighborhood that you could share with them, and it says, "Listen, here are three others that have done this in other areas. There's been no impact to them or the value of that, and it could alleviate some of the concerns." That's something you could do.
Sure.
And I think honestly, ours would... They've been here 31 years. They have a lot of equity built there.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
And this grass is way better than mine.
And honestly, not to be, you know, not to be a jerk about this, but there probably are some people that would believe that putting a group home in a neighborhood is gonna result in a reduction of...
We have that, too.
Right. So my point there is, we as a society recognize sometimes that... And this is not meant as criticism of you or your thoughts, but we as a society sometimes have to suck it up, if you will, because the value to the community of having a particular use and allowing it outweighs the reduction in value or other effects on neighborhoods. That's one of the things we have to think, that we have to consider. Will the variances have an adverse effect on neighboring properties? One of them would be values. So if you have... You're gonna have another month, too. If you have some objective evidence that shows that if we grant this big building there, it's gonna reduce property value, bring it on. You know, that's something that we would consider, for sure. Because it's certainly a valid question to ask.
I have one more. This is for a neighbor immediately to the east of us, Mary Beth Davis. She's in Missouri right now. And she had a question about the barn with the feed and the straw and the hay in it drawing rats. Every barn's got them. Just so you know, that might come up.
Okay.
She asked me to bring it up, so...
Another fair consideration of what that could lead to. I mean, it sounds like if that happens, that's a problem for you.
Yeah.
And it doesn't... I don't know.
I know you don't want them to get in your garage.
No, definitely not.
So that might also be another thing to ask...
Sure.
...fellow operators of such organizations, how they deal with those problems and maybe proactively, for your neighbors, put those things in place.
Okay. Again, we're gonna leave the hearing open because of this issue with what rules apply. So feel free to come back next month.
Are you gonna send a notice out?
Yeah, I guess. What do we do when we leave it open?
So we're not tabling it? We're leaving it open?
We're leaving it open because we may have to have more testimony on this issue of what standard applies.
If I could interject just briefly, just so you're not taken by surprise. So I have been in contact with Andy regarding the business issue. But in reviewing the code, I just want to point out Section 250-5.1-F7 requires any building housing livestock, and I'm making no opinion as to whether these are... The pigs would be considered livestock, or any noxious commodity shall be no nearer than 100 feet to any lot line. And so the placement of the barn may become an issue as well. I just want you to be aware of that.
Because of that 100-foot requirement?
Correct.
Okay, so I don't know if the survey shows the exact distance to... Well, it's any lot line, you say.
Correct, any lot.
Well, they would need a variance, no matter what, then, in place of structure.
Yeah, so based on the placement, it looks like they would be okay front to back of the property, but not on either side?
It'd have to be narrower than...
On the side.
It'd be 47 feet or... No, it would work because it's 240... Well, that angle's 247 feet wide, so technically a 40-foot barn.
Well, so there's another thing that he pointed out. Check that out. And again, I don't want you to be taken by surprise if this becomes an issue and it's something you may wanna talk to the engineer about because, you know, if you can't... If it falls under this section and you can't be at least 100 feet from any lot line...
They are zoned livestock.
Okay, so then you may need to ask for an additional variance, potentially.
Or the placement, because the lot looks like it's almost 250 feet wide. Not quite, but it's close.
So I think it would be in your best interest to get some actual measurements.
Yep.
Not only of the building, but also to the lot.
You may end up jiggling a little bit to get it in with that.
If they're centered in the middle of their yard, it would be the only way.
Yeah, you probably oughta come in here and spend some time with these guys as well, then. Okay. Any other questions or concern? We'll probably see you next month, then. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? Okay. All right, well, then, you can come back next month, too. Again, we're gonna... We'll leave it open to take further testimony out because there's a lot of issues that have developed during this hearing as well.
So there's still the question of if it's left open, is there a need to re-advertise or advertise for next month, or...
I don't know, but why not?
Yeah, that would be my suggestion. There's no harm to re-notice it.
Yeah, we can do it.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna leave the hearing open, and it will continue next month. All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, everybody.
All righty.
Do we need a second on keeping it open?
Second. Geez, I thought I was pretty emphatic, but all right, so we got a sec. Well, I'll take what I said as a motion to keep the hearing open. We have a second from Andres, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Geez, I...
There you go.
I have no power anymore. Okay, next application, please.
Did you ever, Dan, really?
Well, no.
All right.
Number three.
Been married a long time, too, so...
Careful, she may watch these videos.
Yeah, well, yeah, she...
Yeah, right.
Mark N. DePaula, 61 Somalia Circle, Rochester, New York, 14625, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a swimming pool with less rear setback than required under Section 250-5.1-D6 of the code at 61 Somalia Circle. The properties currently are formerly owned by Mark N. and Catherine Lee DePaula and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 108.15-1-46. This is application number 23Z-0059.
Good work, Andy.
He has it written down.
Why don't you go ahead and give us your name and address?
Mark DePaula, 61 Somalia Circle. Okay. Thank you for the application. A lot of information in there. It looks like you are looking to install a pool in the back of the property. Couple of things I noticed, that all the houses on the curve seem to be built farther towards the back, meaning their backyards are much, much smaller.
Smaller than I anticipated.
A little bit smaller, and you need to have so much of concrete space on either side of the pool. Basically, they call it the apron around there.
At least to put a chair or two down, yeah.
Something along the edges. You can't just plop that right against the side of a fence. And so because of that, and where the pool sits on your yard... Actually, that's a great picture. It shows how small the space actually is. Thanks. Sorry. But in terms of, you know, fitting in there, you wanna set it closer to the back property line, still within your property, but just closer to the back, within two feet of it. You can see the spot there was my swing set for years, too. I think it was there in the corner of that. It was on his property, the bare spot, so... And so what we have, there's a couple of situations. Required a town engineer to come out because the way the grade is out there for the drainage swale.
Correct.
I think that's being addressed right now with the way this is gonna go forward. The town engineer's gonna approve the way you'd go through and grade that. But it requires you to do a little grading on your neighbor, who did send a letter in support of the grading and the variance.
Yep.
So I'll have that noted. And I guess, tell me why we couldn't... I mean, was there a pool design that you were able to find that would fit within this property? That's pretty much the smallest. The other ones, 35 by 16, some of them. And with my deck there, I'm already taking two feet off my deck up until where the posts are to each one. Right. And just going flat down, just so I don't have to take more of the deck off because the deck was built 10 years ago, so... Understood. So in a sense, when we look at the pool, this is one of the smaller sizes that you're able to find. And just the size of the lot doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility in terms of putting those things out there. With this pool, is there gonna be like a little pool house? Are you gonna need a space to eventually come back and put, you know, your pump and everything close to the property line? Or is that gonna be... The pump and everything is on the side of my house. Okay. Concrete this way, it will go 10 feet, three feet on this side, maybe five feet to the deck because I'm gonna have stairs coming down the middle. Sure. And then maybe a little something like a... I don't know what the... Like, I don't know what they're called. It's like a little building, not like a building, building, but like a... Right on the concrete, though. Yeah, okay, I know what you mean, like a gazebo. Yeah, like a gazebo or something, that we could put a grill under or... Sure, sure. Get out of the sun, if there is sun here in Rochester. Yes, every once in a while. Every once in a while.
Unlike the last six weeks.
Usually right about now is when the sun comes out. Right. Okay, so have you spoken to any of your neighbors? Besides, I know you were in contact with the ones at the rear. No issues for that? I mean, he's the one primarily impacted by this. Well, yeah, no one has issues. They're just asking when they could come in to the pool. They keep making jokes because the pool's been on the side of my house for a month and a half, so they're like... So they're ready for it to be out of there, too. I have very understanding and loving neighbors, so they're pretty good about it. Okay, got it. Let's see, anything else I have here? I think that's all I have in terms of questions for that. Anyone else have questions?
No, no.
I'm sure a lot of people are calling in about this one, though, Dan. Yeah, because I'm back up to that farm where no one's there, the big hill I look at. And we've mowed to his fence since we moved into the property, too. Right, so you've been taking care of the property? We've been taking care of the property. That's why I thought I had more, and then when we went and actually measured, a month and a half ago, I was like... After you'd already bought a pool? Yeah.
All right, then, once these guys are done with their chit-chat, I'll ask if anybody in the audience cares to speak about this.
You were so witty today.
Long day, long week.
Stuff we're gonna tie all day.
You know, I held off on my snarky comment.
Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? No, the answer is no. Okay, then, let's go ahead.
Okay, I move, this is a type 2 action, requiring no further review for seeker.
Second.
Give it to Lord.
I get it, I get it. That's why I never say it.
All right, a motion to declare it type 2 in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'm gonna move that we grant the variance. In terms of undesirable changes to the neighborhood, nothing was identified in this application or during the hearing here that would have any impact. In fact, the neighbor in the rear sent a letter of support who would be in the most impacted. Could the benefit be sought by any other method? Really, the only other method, it sounds like no pool at all, although it's already sitting there waiting to go in.
Or no chairs around the pool.
And, right, or no chairs or ability to get into the pool because the fence has to block it right to the edge.
Or my kids getting rid of me.
Well, that, too. They can bury you under the pool.
Jimmy Hoffa.
Let's see. The lot, you know, in terms of, could it be achieved some other ways? I think the way the lot is configured, all these homes were closer to the back, so that in a sense put a difficulty in terms of trying to find another way because the homes, the lots in the back are smaller than the ones on the straight of the street. Is it substantial? Yes, I'll say, you know, being two feet from the lot line is, but I don't think in terms of the impact that here, the neighbors at the rear, it's open land, and they also sent a letter of support for that. Are there any adverse impacts? While there was one addressed in terms of the drainage potential that is being mitigated with a town engineer right now, so that will be handled through the town. And was it self-created? Yes, but I think almost everything here is a self-created issue for ourselves here.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks.
We have a motion to approve for the reasons very thoroughly stated in a second. I'm waiting for him to stop writing. Any further discussion? I haven't really been saying it, but there's no call-ins, there's no electronic submission. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thanks, Andy.
Next up.
Mark S. Leysen, 1350 Hudson Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14621. On behalf of Jean and Tracy Richardson, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a pool cabana with less side setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 28 Starcrest Lane. The properties currently are formerly owned by Eugene F. and Tracy L. Richardson and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 093.02-3-32. This is application number 23Z-0060.
All right, come on right up.
Hi, everybody.
Hiya. And give us your name and address.
Mark Leysen, 1350 Hudson Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14621.
Hi, Mark, how are ya?
Good, new?
Good. So thanks for submitting the application on behalf of your clients. So you've been sitting here. You've been listening to a lot. It looks, sounds like you want just really a 50% variance request based on where you wanna put a pool cabana?
And as I can say, as we wanna put it there, the homeowner mainly has chosen that position for its cohesiveness from the existing sitting fireplace patio area, as well as was recommended from the building department to put it to the rear of the property. Therefore, we'd be interfering with all the below-grade plumbing connected to the built-in pool. So that's kind of their position on why they prefer that spot in the north side of the property.
So explain to me, so under the pool, there's some plumbing, and so you can't bring it in a little bit more?
Without disturbing all that that's buried.
Yeah.
The place to the north, there's nothing in the way there. North of the sidewalk slash patio to the swimming pool, that's the chose, the spot she chose and prefers it, is again... patio to the swimming pool, that's the, chose the spot she chose and prefers it, is again, it's cohesive with the stone patio, fire pit area, and access to the garage being closer than around the rear of the property.
As far as the building itself, the pool building, the materials that were going to be used, I saw that there was a letter, one of the neighbors who, at this most of impact, had mentioned that the siding was going to be consistent with the house. Is that, I didn't see any plan, did I just miss that?
Correct. I believe I noted match existing as close as possible, as well as the roofing material as well.
Yep.
And being a relatively preliminary drawing, in terms of further detail, once we have approval, we'll update everything to final finishes.
But the, the intent is that everything would match to the house?
That's per best practice, yes.
Okay. I did note that there was the, the neighbor that this most impacts, so the neighbor, I don't know what direction.
That neighbor that's in agreeance with the project, that would be heading to, towards their property.
Yep.
The encroachment on the setback.
And they were in support of?
They are 100% in support of it.
And again, I just want to be clear, the placement, it's really, even just giving up a foot or two, causes issues because of all of the underground plumbing that has, is going on.
That is correct.
I don't have any other.
I'm, I'm not one of those bougie pigs. A cabana, is it?
He's not bougie at all.
Fully enclosed, is it three sides? Like, what's the definition of a cabana versus a pool house versus a pole barn versus a shed?
What the intention will be in the final drawing state is there'll be an area where the refrigerator to the rear of it will be recessed into a closet, then to the right of that, the anticipation is to put up a TV. Then moving back towards the pool to the south, there will be then a bar area with a bar top with a overhang, again, to the south, where you have a sitting area below the overhang. So to answer, will it be open? 50% of it, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Doesn't look like anybody called in, and no electronic submissions as well. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, let's start with seeker. So I'd make a motion that this request is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action.
Second. All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I would make a motion to approve the request. If you just go through here, you know, as far as the location and being within the, the character of the neighborhood, based on the materials that you described that you're going to use, it would very much fit within the home. It's residential. You have the neighbor's support. Could they achieve this benefit by moving and not requesting the variance? We've discussed that no, they would not be able to because of the plumbing issues that would otherwise be, be created. They could, but it would probably come with a very expensive cost to move that. Is it substantial? 50%, I would say is substantial request, but it's, it's, again, with the support of the neighbor that it's impacting, I'm not overly concerned with that. No adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions, and yes, it is self-created.
All right.
Second.
No, I don't, I don't recall. So we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated. We good? And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Who's second?
Andres.
Andres.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Take care.
James R. Edel, 1327 Penfield Center Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1327 Penfield Center Road. The properties currently are formerly owned by James R. Edel and is zoned R-2, SBL number 110.03-1-6. This is application number 23Z-0061.
Hey, thank you. May we have your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. I'm James Edel. I live at 1327 Penfield Center Road, Penfield, New York.
Okay, thanks. So you own the property, and you want to build a pole barn or accessory structure on it, 960 square feet thereabouts, and a building like that is supposed to be, per code, 50 feet away from the setback line. You're asking for us to give you a 35-foot variance such that the building will be 15 feet from the line. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
So let me first ask you, what are you going to use it for? I didn't, I went through your application again just now, and I didn't see anything in there about what are you going to do.
Well, I, I have a vintage automobile that I want to park in there. I have a tractor that I want to park in there, as well as my lawnmower. In the back half, I'm going to make a woodworking shop.
So presently, where's the car and where's the tractor?
The tractor is outside, and the car is in my garage.
Okay. So by moving, building this building and moving those in there, you'll keep the tractor hidden, so to speak, from?
Out of the weather.
People looking at it, and free up space in your, in your garage for cars that you probably use routinely rather than a vintage one.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And I, and I, the application's pretty clear about all the restrictions that you have because of EPods and wetlands, but.
Whoa. Got a lot of stuff going on that night.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Oh.
But you, you.
If you only knew.
You subdivided the land.
Correct. I, I recently subdivided.
So to a certain extent, you created this issue yourself.
Yes, sir.
So to tell, tell us about that. Did you subdivide with the, were you contemplating requesting this variance for this building at the moment you subdivided?
No, sir.
Okay. So tell us how the idea came about, then.
Well, I had actually hoped to put it on the other side of the house, and I applied to the DEC to, for a permit to build it within 100-foot buffer, and they don't want me to do it. So the only other spot I have is where I have proposed.
And you've heard us go back and forth with folks tonight about, hey, can it be five feet over? Can it be? So, you know, why can't it be 20 feet from the line instead of 15 or 25 feet?
It, it actually would be about 20 feet. I, I remeasured, and it would be 20 rather than 15.
Wow.
But.
So why can't it be 25, then?
I'm only going to have about 40 feet between my house and the pole barn, and I would like to have a little bit of a side yard there.
Yeah, okay, well, that's an answer. We get it. I have to tell you.
Plus, I have a septic system there.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's more of a, hey, can't do it rather than just don't want to do it.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the farther you move it from the line, the closer you're getting to that septic.
Yes, sir.
All right. We had an application probably five, six months ago now, or something similar, and, and ended up getting withdrawn, if I remember correctly, if you guys are thinking of, remember this one, but one of the neighbors brought like a, I don't even know what she brought. The request was that the, that the building, which was pretty big, be within 10 feet of the line, and she brought us a photo, used something.
It was a porta potty.
Yeah, a porta potty, it was an outhouse, yeah.
That's what it was. And boy, so my point in saying that is 20 feet seems, ah, 20 feet, but it's not a lot. But actually, a 50-foot setback requirement.
It is all wooded.
Yeah, that's key. I was getting there, but you beat me to it. So, okay. You've told us what you're going to use it for. Does it have to be that big? Can you make the building smaller so you can push it in more?
Well, sure, I could.
Okay.
I could put a shed there, but this is, to do what I want, this is the size I want. I would like to go bigger.
Yeah.
But financially, I can't.
Okay. All right. And are you aware of any potential environmental impacts or, or anything along those lines?
None whatsoever.
From that? Okay. And the, you said the DEC said no to the other location?
Yes, that is correct.
Do you have that, do you have a, maybe it's in here and I missed it, but do you have something in writing from them saying, no, we can't do it? Okay.
They, they didn't actually say no, but over a six-month period, they were making it so difficult for me, I actually withdrew.
Okay.
Because it was evident that they did not want me to do that.
Okay. All right, well, I'll certainly accept that. I'm, right, right, okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
No? All right.
So there is no neighbor? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
I am the neighbor next to it.
You own the land to the next.
You don't object to this, then, do you?
The next parcel.
As a neighbor?
Boy, that would be really awkward.
You should have written a letter in favor of it as a neighbor.
Now, when there's public comment, he's going to stand up, go to the next table and object to the application.
As a matter of fact, when I was talking to Phil, I said, you know, I do own the property next to it, so my, my lot line is actually quite a bit over. They said, well, not since you subdivided, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, very good. So no calls, no electronic submissions. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay. So let's first consider the seeker here, which I'd make a motion to declare it a type 2 action under seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So going through the factors here, first, I'm going to make a motion to approve the area variance. Given the location of this, we frequently have applications for variances, for outbuildings, and I'm not going to say we, we routinely grant them, but we grant them often after a lot of scrutiny like we have here. Because of that, I don't think there will be any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There are plenty of outbuildings of this size in that area.
It, it's going to look nice. I'm going to have it the same color as the house.
Yep. Yeah, that's all part of his application. That's, that's true, too. It'll look nice. It'll be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Can the benefit sought be achieved by some method feasible? I, I would say no, and in fact, the record demonstrates that he did make efforts to try to locate it in another portion. While he withdrew that application, he did so because the efforts it would have taken were not feasible. Is it substantial? Yes. Again, going on, on pure numbers, it is. Now, by the way, we're considering this a request for a 30-foot setback. You, you're okay with that, right? In writing, it was 15, but you said you only need 20.
No, 30, 30 is going to be too much. I, 15, 20 would be.
I'm sorry, 20 from, from the property line.
20 would be appropriate, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's what it's going to be. So that's still substantial, not as substantial, but, but it is substantial. But given the fact of the limitations of this property by the other characteristics of it, the EPod, the septic, to me, that really reduces the value of the fact that it is a substantial, or importance, I should say, of, so it's substantial, but not, not enough to outweigh the positive aspects of the application. There's no evidence of any adverse effects or impacts on the physical or environmental conditions, unless I missed something. Is it self-created? Yes, it is self-created because he putting a building up and he subdivided, although I certainly credit his testimony that he didn't have the intent to build this in this location at the time he got subdivision.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion to approve for those reasons. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everyone's patience tonight. It, it seems like it's 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
All right, I think that was the last one. So we will stand adjourned until next month. Thank you all very much.